Cookies, muffins, or the kids for the house. Like something.
They bring some of that stuff over here.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think.
Smell of cookies when they come into the house.
No, I agree.
And then, again, whatever it is that they do.
Well, not a meeting, but with all the kids on the superintendent's going to talk with Nadia.
And then, you know, seven o'clock.
Robert?
Some kids got.
I think so.
Whoever's working on that. So, some gets.
What's that?
Kids get to set the place and then some gets.
Is everybody ready?
Yes.
Everybody ready?
Nope.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of October nineteenth. You have before you an agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, comments from the public?
What are you doing? My name's Scott O'Connor.
Can you go over there? To go to the microphone?
That'll work. My name's Scott O'Connor, and I'm here representing the Nantucket Athletic Booster Club. And I was here specifically to address the issue of the food trucks at athletic events for the Nantucket Public Schools. So, I thought I'd first start off by just letting people know a little bit about the Booster Club and what the Booster Club does. The Booster Club is in existence to support all the student athletes from CPS level up through the high school. A lot of people are under the mistaken impression that it just has to do with football. Although, the football season does provide a significant amount of fundraising for our organization. But those funds are spread across all the other sports and all the other sports seasons. The club's been in existence since nineteen sixty-five, and this fall, we're getting going again, trying to get things back to normal where they were a year and a half, two years ago. Part of that is recruiting a lot of new members with our expanded purview now that we've expanded to the CPS school. So, part of what we're doing and what we have done in the past, we've provided money for equipment across all the sports. Everything from soccer goals to trainer's room equipment, spas, ice machines, things like that, cross-country uniforms, hockey uniform equipment, batting cages for the baseball team, batting cages for the softball team, blocking sleds for the football team, and on and on when it comes to equipment. We've supported all our Whaler athletic teams with ferries, buses, planes, transportation. When they're going to playoffs, we pay for hotels, we pay for food and meals. We've underwritten homecoming, we've underwritten the Island Cup, we pay for the ferries there, we pay for decorations at homecoming. We've given out probably hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships over the last fifty-plus years to alumni athletes. I don't know if a lot of people are aware of that, but alumni athletes who've been a varsity athlete at Nantucket High School have been receiving scholarships from the Booster Club every year. So, that's a little bit about the Booster Club. As far as the food trucks go, this year has been an interesting one as we have tried to recruit new people. We've been limited on what we are allowed to do by the Health Department down at the shack. We've only been able to do prepared foods and drinks and things like that as we try and get some of the new members, some of the younger parents, have them get serve-safe certified. And we've hopefully successfully accomplished that goal, and we plan on having the shack open again for the homecoming slash Island Cup game against the Vineyard, which is also probably the biggest two revenue events when it comes to fundraising at the field there for concessions. So, it's typically five thousand to ten thousand dollars out of the shack on that one game. So, I know there's, that would probably be a significant amount of money that's being made by whoever is providing the food concession there. So, that's something to think about when you're thinking about fees. I'm also concerned about creating a precedent where you're allowing private enterprises to come and profit off the backs of the student athletes with no real benefit to them. A three hundred to six hundred dollar fee being paid by one or two food trucks is not really going to benefit the school. In the long run, it's going to hurt the school because that five thousand to ten thousand dollars that the Booster Club would have collected, you're going to end up paying, or the parents are going to end up paying. Somebody's going to make up the difference for all those expenses that are not going to be covered. I'll be here if you guys have any questions for me about anything that's going on.
Scott, since you brought up something sort of out of sync, but Diane, you were going to speak about the food trucks.
Sure. So, this was brought up because there wasn't any food at the shack. And I was sitting on the couch one night and I got a text that there was a food truck coming to the schools, and we said that they couldn't come because we didn't have a process in place. So, all I really did, I know the procurement logs, I contacted the IDs office, I contacted the land bank. The land bank actually bids out their properties for their food trucks. The IDs office told me I could do it two ways. We could either bid out different properties, or we could sort of write an agreement, which is what we do for facilities use. Some people rent out the auditorium, they have to fill this out, they have to have their liability insurance, they have to have core reforms filled out, they have to do their hold harmless agreements. And then, in this instance, they would also need a mobile u, excuse me, mobile food unit license from the town. So, I did a lot of research through, really put this together as a draft. This isn't just for boosters, this isn't for athletic events only. We have a lot of instances where teachers want a food truck to come because it's their first week of school, and they all want to eat lunch together, but they don't want to leave campus. There are dozens of other instances where a food truck would be beneficial to the Nantucket Public Schools. And that really is the trucks behind this. We need something in place. Food trucks are reality, they're everywhere. A lot of schools and communities actually have like Food Truck Friday where they all invite them to their campus to do, you know, to have families come and have dinner. So, really, obviously Booster Club takes precedence. If someone fills out an application, it doesn't mean it's approved. That has to sign it, I have to sign it. If we've talked to the Booster Club and they say, "No, we're opening shack," we obviously wouldn't undermine them. It's a, it's a process that needs to be put into place. So, that's why it's before you tonight. That's really the only reason. I don't.
Is the Booster Club going to be able to recreate what they've done in the past?
But that is, that is the plan, and I apologize. Diane, I haven't seen your presentation or seen any of what has been going on. And I'm not worried about teachers or, we're primarily talking about, obviously, athletic events and the food trucks, and then how you choose which food truck. Because, quite frankly, there are a number of establishments on the island that have been supporters of the Booster Club for decades that have food trucks. And, you know, they've been donating their goods and services to us for years. So, how would you decide which food trucks are going to be the ones?
Well, no, my question is, is the Booster's Club going to be able to have, as they've had in the past, clam chowder, hot sandwiches, or is it going to be cold-wrapped sandwiches on a coat?
No, our plan, our plan is to get back to doing like what you said, the clam chowder, which is donated by an organization that has a food truck. Yeah, we want to get back to that with the new people and have, have hot food services.
Does someone currently have it? Because I talked to the Health Department today before I came there, because I always like to have, and they said, "No."
No, there are, actually, there is one member of the Booster Club right now that I found out today does have one that's still valid, which I found out this afternoon. And there's other people that took the course over the weekend. So, that, that issue has been solved. So, those people are also new parents, so they'll be around for the three to five years, you know, that they're.
No, I appreciate that. My concern is, I don't want to go into the Vineyard game.
Right.
Without something good to have.
And we are in full, we are in full agreement with that as the Booster Club. So, if something was to happen with the Health Department or something like that, I would probably pick up the phone and call Diana later.
But we're sort of not that far away.
Right. Two weeks.
If you move it forward, you saw her presentation. I think they can both coexist, but I would hate Dr. Lepri saying, "All of a sudden, that certification is not a void." But with a food truck being a homecoming weekend, there's different games on different fields. You could have a food truck at different events. Now, that being said, how money is raised, then if you're, if you're a law professor, you had a year to get this done. I mean, you had one year to get someone serve-safe. You know, you knew what the first game was. It was.
Well, actually, we didn't know what the process was going to be, if we were even going to be allowed.
So, you're saying up until the shit, no one was ever serve-safe?
No, no, some other events that we had thought were going to happen had been canceled. We weren't sure what kind of normalcy was going to return this fall. So, there's a question mark in everybody's brains.
Well, you knew, you knew that it was going to be spectators allowed at the field.
Right. So, I'm not against food trucks.
I have some question is, why wasn't someone, who was the person who was in two thousand nineteen, who was, had that license to be serve-safe?
Me.
So, you let it fall?
Mine expired. We've, we're trying.
And you're the president of the boosters?
I'm the pres, currently the president of the boosters. So, what we are trying to do, instead of spending money for me to renew my license or my serve-safe, we're trying to take the funds, which are not unlimited for the Booster Club, and have new parents, who we've been recruiting since the end of the summer, pay them to have their certifications that is going to last them three to five years. Right now, I don't have any kids left in the school. I'm going to be there to mentor, help, and advise them to get things done. But for us to spend the money to have me get serve-safe certified again for another five years isn't going to help anybody. So, that's, that has been our goal, is to get younger parents, the CPS parents, get younger high school parents, freshmen, get that group of parents, and get them involved and get them serve-safe certified so that there's a three- or five-year window looking out. That that, that ability will be there for a longer-term picture.
All right, so homecoming is the football game.
Yes.
And I'm not sure what the schedule is, but what other games are being played that day? Is there a soccer game?
There, I think there's a lot of games. There's CPS games, there's.
So, if you had a food truck at each one of these spots, and their designation was fifteen percent or twenty percent of your gross revenue is kicked back to the boosters, you're making money from another spot you're not even at.
Well, there's, let me clarify that a couple of ways. First of all, the Booster Club has been trying to go to those other events. We haven't been selling hot food there, but we have been selling drinks and chips and things like that. And that's one of the, one of the things we've been trying to do. And that's probably going to change with the new master campus plan, is how the Booster Club is going to move forward and, and be at those locations in the future.
We're just talking about two weeks. We're not talking about the master plan.
So, for two weeks, for two weeks from now, we're going to use the shack. That's the bottom line. We're going to use the shack.
So, you're saying, are you for the food trucks or are you against?
I think that what Diane is talking about is probably a bigger picture. I haven't seen her presentation yet, so it's hard for me to comment on it, but I think, I think that there's definitely space for food trucks somewhere on the campus doing, doing things.
There are a lot of other events besides football games that would benefit from a food truck pricing. Obviously, we would work with the Booster Club, we know how important that is. No one loves Whaler sports more than I do.
Right.
I'm probably Tim, but.
So, we're not here saying we're against the food trucks. That wasn't.
No, but this is a bigger picture.
Right. So, like I said, I haven't seen that.
How do we deal with food trucks and have it legally on our premises where everyone thinks poor, even the liability insurance is in check, and the, you know, hold premise agreement's been signed, so there's no lawsuits, and so things like that. I, I, that's what this really represents to me.
Right.
If I may, through the chair?
Yep.
Just to, just to clarify, Diane's presentation is really a presentation of the application form that was created, and it's currently a draft, and it just outlines the process for anyone, if we decide, and if the school committee decides that they'd like to allow food trucks to come on the premises, this is the application that we would use in order to determine who could come, how they would come. And it's only for outside events, outdoor events, and it is at the discretion of the superintendent and the facilities director. And not to cut into your presentation, but seeing that you've already pretty much done it.
But really, it's one thing, it's just the application.
Right. The, the fee that we had, we have agreed upon currently is, and it's certainly subject to change based on what we hear from the public, from the food trucks, from you, whatever. What we agreed to was six hundred dollars per event, per day, payable by check and dispensed equally between the Booster's Club and the Facilities and Grounds Revolver, because they are the ones who will be cleaning up after, after the food truck. There are some stipulations about trash removal, stipulations about containers. There's a lot in here that's specific to what food trucks can and cannot do. So, this is, again, a draft that can be looked at, shared, ripped apart. The fact of the matter is, we wanted to bring it just in case and not, and not knowing, and I'm thrilled to hear that we have some serve-safe certified people, and the Booster Shack can start, because that's really what we want. We want to be able to support the Booster Shack. So, so, you know, that's, that's great. We just wanted to get this in front of you to start that process if we wanted it. And again, this is, this is up to you in some way, so.
Yes, and I just want to just close my remarks by just saying, I didn't come here to comment really on a presentation that I haven't seen yet from Diane or a form that I haven't seen. I just thought it was a good opportunity for the community at large to understand what the mission of the Booster Club is. I've run into so many people in the last week that think it's just about football, so I thought this was a good opportunity to come here, let the school community know, and the community at large know what the Booster Club is doing and what the plans are for the future. So, again, if there's, if there are parents out there that want to get involved, please let us know. We definitely are looking for younger parents all the way down through to the CPS level to come and help us out.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none? Superintendent's report.
Sure. Okay, short and sweet tonight. I wanted to share some very exciting news about our burgeoning band program. The NIS Band currently has eighty-seven students in fourth and fifth grade.
Awesome.
And then, this is, these are beginning band students, so they are brand-new to the instruments. We haven't had band in two years, so we even have some sixth graders who also are starting. They're not with this band, but they are starting in the middle school as well. Dr. Eddie Wilken is the band director at NIS, and he is very organized. He's met with his full band twice. He's offering also thirty-minute instructional, sectional lessons where groups meet together to practice and to learn just their instrument. So, he will have all the percussionists together, he will have all the brass players together, so that's trumpet and trombone and things. He'll have the clarinets together, the saxophones together, and these rotate through the school day. So, this is great because it's an opportunity for kids to have that additional instruction during the day, and then on Wednesday, excuse me, on Monday afternoons, there's a full band rehearsal. So, obviously, eighty-seven children is a little much for one person, so we have actually increased the stipends and added two additional stipends. So, our other two music teachers, band instrumental teachers, Tom Pep, Tom Pipard and Nick Hayden, will be helping. And I think this is a great opportunity for alignment, because the kids who continue will see Nick in the middle school, and then they will see Tom in the high school. So, I'm thrilled, and I'm sure that within maybe five or six years, we could have a small pep band, which may eventually turn into a marching band, but we need some time, and we have to build from the bottom up, so, but we're really excited about this.
Questions, Catherine?
I think the marching band is a great idea, especially for homecoming. That'd be great to see.
In five to six years.
You may miss it.
Rocky?
Eighty-seven, eighty-seven musicians in orchestra. That's not a band.
Ms. Murphy?
I love it.
Lars?
I think it's wonderful.
Pauline?
Ditto. I think it's excellent.
Well, I think this is fulfilling one of the reasons I voted to hire you. Because I thought that this would be really an opportunity to develop in this area, which has slowly atrophied over time.
Well, I'm thrilled to be able to support the program, and I will wholeheartedly, so.
The school calendar?
Yes. So, you have in your packets a school calendar. It has gone through a couple of corrections simply because it is a document that has a lot of small numbers, and so the one that you have in your packet is the correct one. It has been shared with the leadership team, the district leadership team, and with NTA, and as of tonight, no one has objected to anything on this. It seems like it is, people are comfortable with it. So, you are welcome to review it and ask any questions, anything of note particularly. The holidays, the Christmas holiday and the New Year holiday both fall on Mondays because they are observed holidays. The twenty-fifth is a Sunday, and January first is a Sunday, so the observed holidays are Monday, the twenty-sixth, and Monday, the second. Everything else should be fairly clear, but we're happy to discuss if you wish.
Catherine?
I don't have anything to say.
Rocky?
Looks good to me.
Ms. Murphy?
Looks good.
Pauline?
Agreed.
Pauline?
No comments at this point.
The calendar has been one of the intricacies of school administration that is fraught with danger.
I will mention that if we can, if this is the actual draft one, it would be fantastic.
No, I have one question to the chair. Our winter break is different from all other winter breaks in the state of Massachusetts, am I correct?
You are correct.
So, we're the only school in Massachusetts that takes that one week off? Why is that?
Martha's Vineyard.
Martha's Vineyard? Oh, the two islands?
In northern Massachusetts.
Northern Mass, where's northern Massachusetts?
Or New Hampshire, because New Hampshire is the same week as ours.
The reason behind this is, it certainly predates me, the decision, but I believe it had to do with more ease in finding travel accommodations and arrangements, because.
So, that's the week everyone had their one week of condos in Florida?
Yeah, I, I, that's what I assume. That's what I assume.
That's right.
That was, that's my week. I bought that one week. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, we are thrilled to announce a very special award that happened, that was bestowed upon one of our Nantucket High School students, Natalie Mack. And I'm going to actually turn this over to Mrs. Vassal, who has been certainly fully involved with the MIAA and with this award. So, I'm going to have her give some details specifically about this very special award. And Natalie, we'd love for you to come up so that if there are any questions from the committee that you can answer. So, come on up. We're very excited to.
Thank you, Dr. Hallett, and thank you Chairperson Lepri?
You'll get it right.
To school committee members. I appreciate the opportunity to recognize Natalie this evening. For me, it's always a pleasure as an administrator to recognize our students and their accomplishments. I especially want to make note that Natalie's parents, Jerry and Becky Mack, are also here this evening. Short notice, so thank you for being here also. So. So, Natalie's award is the Champion of Wellness through the MIAA. The, the award is presented to students or student groups who have done something or participated in a program to promote the health and well-being of the school in general and to promote healthy choices for all students. So, let me just tell you, last year, I met Natalie, Ms. Aradellis and I met Nat, well, I think Ms. Aradellis may have known Natalie, but, no? So, we, I met her for the first time last year. We started a student forum in the summer, and we started in the summer because we wanted some student opinions on, you know, what worked in the spring when we went to shut down, what didn't work, and what can we do going forward. So, one of the things that came from our student forum group was to do a video of our safety protocols starting school. We thought doing a video would help our students to see, and Natalie spearheaded creating the video. She shot the video, she edited the video, and then from that, we had a request from Roberto Santa Maria that if we had a video that was a PSA for our island community about wearing masks and staying safe. So, Natalie also put that together, and she coordinated students from all four schools to be part of that video. So, when this opportunity for the award came up, I'm like, "Oh, I know who we can nominate." And so, the nomination was actually made back in February. And so, unfortunately, Natalie wasn't selected. She had no idea that we had done this. Dr. Hallett and Ms. Aradellis were the only two that even knew that we had made the nomination. And then, in September, I got an email about Natalie's nomination and said, "Would we like to put her nomination forward again?" I went, "Yeah, absolutely." So, to our surprise, she was selected, and we are extremely proud of her and the work that she has done. And the other thing that I did not know until we did, they had a virtual wellness summit last Friday, and she was recognized at the summit. She's the only student in the state of Massachusetts to receive this award. So, she is to be commended for the work she has done.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Sure. Yeah, it was a, just an opportunity I jumped on, because I, I'm a pretty visual person, so going back to school after everything that had happened in the spring and not being at school, it was probably, I figured, easier for people to like see what was going to happen in the school instead of just reading a list of it. And so, they knew exactly what to do, so just so we could keep everybody safe. And then, I figured it was important for like the general public to like understand that like we need to be wearing masks, we need to be doing this, we need to be social distancing, so that we could stay in school, because a big part of it was, the whole community was helping us stay in school. So, I think both of those things were pretty important, so I was happy to do it. Thank you.
Questions, Catherine?
I just want to say congratulations. That's a great award.
Thank you. Congratulations, Natalie.
It, it was a fun time doing the video too. And especially when we had, when we have a half a dozen students, and we tried to make it look like we had at least a dozen.
Can we, can we see the video? How, how can we view the video?
I'd be glad to share it with you.
Okay.
It was part of the application, so I have it right in my email, and I'm happy to share it with you.
I'd love, I'd love to see it.
Okay, through the chair if it's all right. I'll be happy to share that with everyone.
Questions, Anne?
I had no question. Well, I had a question, but Rocky beat me to it.
Sorry, I'm on this side.
No questions, but really, congratulations, Natalie. Bravo.
Pauline?
No questions, but again, congratulations, and I love that you brought all of the schools into this, because I think coming back through COVID, particularly for our younger students, I mean, for many people, it's frightening and scary, but for you to have that thought of being able to include everybody was brilliant. So, congratulations.
I have a question. How did you recruit kids?
I, I just know a lot of younger kids, just like family, friends and stuff, so I just figured they'd probably want to be a part of it.
How long is it?
Probably five minutes. Yeah, yeah, I tried to keep it short.
Okay.
And what, what age groups it geared towards? Just pre-K through twelve, or is it all grades?
So, the one video that we did for the high school was for our, for the high school-specific safety protocols. So, she did that video. That video was probably Ms. Aradellis' six or seven minutes, maybe? And we had all of our teachers share that remotely with their students before we returned to school in person. And then, the PSA, I believe, might have been what, about forty-five seconds or a minute, maybe?
Yeah.
It was quick. But she, Natalie recruited the students at the other schools on her own.
So, it's basic, I'm just trying, wondering if like, if your message, which is, which is awesome, could that be to the others? The charter schools on Nantucket as well? Could you gone to the Lighthouse School and those other schools and shared it with them as well? If that, if it, if it would have been pertaining to them?
Yeah, definitely.
The PSA was, was actually released for the whole island, so it wasn't just.
I've never heard of it, so I'm just wondering.
So, yeah, so they absolutely could have, and I think that she ended up doing something with the radio station as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Natalie.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, presentations and discussions of issues of interest to the committee. Food trucks. Do you have anything else to say, Diane?
No, I just think it is a big picture thing. It's not just for homecoming or, you know, any particular game or anything like that. It's just a, I'd like to see it move forward just because we need something in place when people approach us and say, "Can we do this?"
Catherine?
I don't have anything to say.
Rocky?
I have tons to say.
Okay.
Can we have Diane come up to the microphone, just because I don't know that they can.
I think that, uh.
You want to come up to the microphone?
Oh. We can't hear me, Diane? I get that the boosters get generally a lot of their revenue on this, in this one game, this one weekend. But I also think that having a food truck outside during a basketball game would also be beneficial outside of a field hockey game, not just on a Saturday or a Friday night. I mean, I get, I think six hundred dollars is too much. I mean, I get, I think six hundred dollars is too much for the fee. I think this, I'll have to ask Martin, but between three and six hundred dollars is, is your window. But those, those food trucks could be set up on a soccer game, at a field hockey game. But as long as they're paying back at the booster clubs, you can make money on a Thursday afternoon. And a lot of parents who come to watch their kids play don't have time to go home to eat, they're just trying to get to the game. You know what I mean? Or, or a cross game, I think that there's a lot of opportunity. I think the booster club would make more money in the long run by having these food trucks accessible. And it also helps out local people that we all know are just trying to make a living. We have a food truck who comes to the box, but we're private. But you know what, the people that come there, they came there for one specific reason, to see that taco truck. To see that one truck. How Diane or Dr. Halt decide who goes to that? Well, the first week, you put the names in a bucket and you take it out, then you rotate after the fact. But I really think that visibility for that business and it serves something to a parent who doesn't have to run his stop and shop at seven thirty at night after the game's over and it's getting dark to feed their kids. Is the food always good on the food truck? Nah, but you know what, I'll take it. I, I can't think of any reason why not to do it. And I'm like, I'm a huge fan of the boosters. I did fundraisers for ten years for the boosters club at the chicken box. But there's, this is another source of revenue, you take your percentage. You hear? What's your gross revenue? You owe twenty percent back, ten percent to facilities, ten percent to the boosters.
Can I just say something about, this wasn't intended for one truck per event. I think that multiple trucks could come.
I'm with it. Line them all up.
It should be limited.
Five in a row.
That's not how we wrote it, that it was limited. But I agree that if you're opening the shack, that, in my own opinion, that we shouldn't do it if they are opening the shack. But if you're not, and you're right, Bacchus Lane maybe could use a food truck that day or the First Way parking lot for the soccer games or something. This was really a draft, it's really for you all to work on. I really think it's a process that needs to be in place for here, for the public schools. And that's why it's before you.
Is Marilda?
If I may, through the chair, is there a way, I, you said this is a draft, is there a way to include like a clause or an condition, like Rocky had mentioned, that when there is a food truck, if they, their profit, fifteen, twenty percent be given back to the school, either to the boosters?
So it's on the signature page?
Okay.
As Marilda, and the fee is, it's slated in here as six hundred dollars per event per day. It will be dispersed equally to the boosters club and the facilities and grounds revolver. Because the facilities and grounds has to clean up after them.
Okay.
But the boosters club would benefit from any food truck on our premises at any time.
At any time.
Not just during a sporting event. That's how Dr. Hallett wanted us to write it.
Laura?
Got it.
If I may, through the chair, I don't have any questions, but it just seems as though we're really saying the same thing. I mean, supporting the boosters is primary and then the food trucks would be supplementary and welcome. But the booster is our first, that's where we want our funds to go. So it seems like this is just simply, that when somebody applies, here you go, here's the application, here's the process. So I would say that this conversation is important for that reason, but that we are obviously acknowledging that the boosters are what we want to support first and foremost.
Pauline?
Yep, I, I would say I'm in agreement with everything that's been said. When I first saw this, I did send an email to Dr. Hallett because it did concern me to think, well, where is the boosters in this? And, and so that was my initial thought, but having heard this conversation now, I, I feel comfortable. And I think that if the school is able to make a percentage off of somebody coming in for another event, then it's kind of a win-win because we only have the shack, right? So it's not like we can be in multiple sites. So, no, so I'm, I'm good.
And my thinking is, it should be, I'm sorry, through the chair, the three hundred dollars or whatever, six hundred dollars, I can't get behind. But say it's four hundred dollars or three hundred dollars, it's that plus fifteen percent. It can't be one, it can't be one and the other?
That's hard to do, because then you have to ask people.
So it has to be either three hundred dollars or no percentage, to keep the profits. Right?
But I think that's getting in a couple steps down.
That's digging too deep?
That's digging too deep right now, but I mean, I think.
Then six hundred it is.
We're talking about the concept, well, no, it's a concept, I mean, I think it's a draft.
Yeah.
I certainly miss being at the football games, miss the shack. And I was concerned that I would have to go to the vineyard game and sit there and not smell stuff cooking, which I think is very disturbing. And the idea of cold sandwiches and a Coke is also frightening. So I don't think anybody in the committee wants to impact the boosters club adversely. And as long as you guys are there, I'll be totally happy. But if something falls through, make sure you call Diane ahead of time because I really think we need to have something there. And I think the idea of having a food truck at other events that, I mean, if you guys are selling chips and Coke, maybe we could do a little bit better at these other events.
It wasn't our intention to come across as negative against food trucks as a general policy.
No, okay.
But Wendy, Wendy, like these guys on, does everybody who works at that shack, are they Corey certified?
That I couldn't answer those.
Don't they have to be? Because if you work on a food truck, you have to be, your certification has to be Corey.
If I may, through the chair, it's, it's a simple certification and I'm sure we can get this, get it done.
I'm talking about the food truck people, I like to see them both coexist. I just hate to see that week that you kick in the volunteers to have Nicky DeWatt burning hamburgers. I want to see that, smell that.
Well, I think we're talking about a draft and I think there are certain statutory things that will need to be taken care of.
You need to vote on this before we could move forward with it.
Yeah, right.
Right?
Well, we're going to when we do votes.
If I, if I may, probably we would vote on it at our retreat on the twenty-sixth. If we want to move it forward quickly, that, that would be the time that we would, we would vote on.
And when's the vineyard game?
The thirtieth.
Those food trucks need to know what food they need to order and where they're going to be, what locations. So if you wait till that, they, they might, it's a moot point, they might, they can't order the food.
Well, I mean, okay, I'm sort of football oriented. So I don't think that you guys do much at the soccer games or field hockey games.
No, I'm talking about the food trucks.
I know, but I'm talking about the boosters club, they don't do much business there and the food trucks may be able to. But if there's something that's going to fall through, I mean, certainly I hope you'd let Diane know about it. Because Diane is a big booster and wants to make sure it's successful.
Yeah, hundred percent.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay, MCAS presentation. Should we be down in front?
We have our copy right here.
I'll try to open my hand.
So we are here tonight to talk with you about our preliminary analysis of the MCAS data from last year. In this presentation, yeah, did I cover that? We are going to explain the state stance and the purpose of the MCAS for last year. Given that it was a COVID year, it's a little bit different. We're going to share our MCAS results. We're going to also look at the correlation between MCAS and ACCESS. ACCESS is a test for, that our EL students take, our English language learners, because there's some really interesting information there. We'll highlight some of our initial analyses. We're going to share what we're doing to improve instruction, how we're using the data to improve instruction, as well as our next steps that are aligned with our district's new core values, vision and mission.
So the purpose of MCAS this year is a little bit different. It was really an attempt by the state to quantify the impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic on student learning. And also for teachers and schools and districts, so they can use that data to develop strategies to address that, that, those learning losses and determine which areas need the most intervention. There are no accountability consequences from the scores, so school districts will not be penalized for this data. So we won't, it won't go into our, our status, it won't affect our status. So we're going to look at some of this data. You should know that the state keeps, every week they're releasing more, more reports with more detailed information. So what we're sharing tonight is kind of our initial dive into the data. There are lots of questions that we may not have the answers to yet, but that's, this is like the beginning of our process. So for ELA, you can see this is, I'm going to do it a little bit bigger. See it on here, hang on just a second, I should wear my glasses. There we go. All right, there we go. So you can see here, this is our scores from grades three through eight, the average three through eight of our MCAS scores this past spring in English Language Arts. And it's the information regarding, can I see our notes here? Sorry, my laptop's on my computer. There we go, okay. And the relation of our scores to the district. You can see that we are slightly below the district average in our grades three through eight English scores. However, we have a really small district compared to a lot of districts around the Commonwealth. And what this means is that if we can move, we've quantified fifty-eight students from partially meeting to meeting, we will be exceeding the state, the, the state average. And also a hundred and fifty-two former English learners were tested in this group and sixty-one of them were partially meeting. And Patty will talk a little bit more about the relationship between English learner status and MCAS scores. And so you'll understand kind of a little bit more about that. All right, and these are our, this is a comparison of our scores pre-COVID and post-COVID. So you can see two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty-one, our scores. Obviously, we didn't have the MCAS test in twenty twenty, but you can see that the scores are lower this year than they were in previous years, which they were for the state as well. And this is our ELA grade ten MCAS scores. Again, we can, we are slightly lower than the state, but in this, in tenth grade, if we moved eight students from partially meeting to meeting, that would give us equivalent percents with the state. And again, ten former Ls were tested in this group and five of those were partially meeting. And these are grade ten scores, pre-COVID and post-COVID. We have two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one, we don't have two thousand eighteen because the MCAS changed between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. So we would not be comparing apples to apples there. But you can see, again, as with the rest of the state, our scores were not as high post-COVID.
So this particular graph is data from the state and it shows the correlation between MCAS and ACCESS. And this is not a small range of just Nantucket, this is the entire state for ELLs. It's taken from the Department of Ed's ELL dark data. What you notice is that when students perform at a level one on ACCESS, they're most likely not going to meet standards on MCAS. Makes sense because MCAS is an English test and they haven't perfected English yet. As they move on and they score maybe a level two or a level three, notice that the percentage of students not meeting expectations decreases to the point where it doesn't exist on level six. And this is true for the opposite as well. If you notice, partially meeting increases as students show more proficiency in the English language. If you notice at level four, something interesting happens. Across the state at level four, typically most students are exited with a composite score of four point two. That would be at a level four. They're still in their journey to acquire language, but they're exited into regular classrooms to continue their journey in language acquisition. If we can move them to fives and sixes after they've been reclassified as former English language learners, which we still need to monitor for four years, we would be able to then reach that meeting and exceeding for these particular students, which we have a number of them. As a matter of fact, Nantucket has seen the most change in demographics in the entire state, according to some recent data that I've seen.
All right, so we're going to move on and talk about math now and then we'll follow up with science after that. As you can see with math, we're looking at grades three to eight here. And our district for meeting expectations is a little bit lower than the state. And for partially meeting, we are higher. So again, we're in this situation where we need to help move some of our students from the partially meeting to the meeting. Specifically for grades three to eight, when doing the math, we're looking at a hundred and seven students. There are a hundred and fifty-two former Ls in this group. And you're going to notice, we're going to keep coming back and talking about this former Ls group because this is a theme that we're seeing across the data. And it's a way that we see that we can move and improve. So of the hundred and fifty-two that were in this group, ninety-three were partially meeting. All right? But we said we need to move a hundred and seven. So if we can help this former Ls group, that is going to really help boost our overall data that we're seeing. If we move on to the next slide, we're looking at pre-COVID and post-COVID for grades three to eight. Again, we're seeing the same type of trends and this is across the state. The test scores are a little bit lower after COVID. In terms of grade ten, you can see that we've made up some ground at this point, right? We're almost, you can see the green bars, which is meeting expectations, are almost equal with the state. We need to move fifteen students, which is, was really good. And the ten, we have ten former Ls in this group and nine of them were partially meeting or not meeting. So if we can help move those students, nine, and we're trying to move fifteen, that's making up a big difference there. And again, you can see grade ten, pre-COVID and post-COVID, we've gone down some as a result. But we're going to come back and talk about another aspect in terms of growth in a few minutes. That is quite positive in terms of what we're seeing.
So surprisingly, the data for the math MCAS in access is almost identical with a few percentage points changing only. So that's why the graph looks so similar. Remember, this is a large sampling of probably twenty-five thousand students across the state that have taken both MCAS and ACCESS. And it's a similar trend. When you can use the WIDA writing rubrics and the WIDA ORACY rubrics to get them to perform at a level five and six, they're more likely to be meeting or exceeding expectations on MCAS.
And now we're going to move into science. And we are seeing some really good things going on with science. So this, these are the results for grades three to eight for last year. And you can see that our meeting expectations is almost equal to the state. We have a few less that are exceeding expectations. In fact, at the grade eight, we were only one student lower than the state for meeting or exceeding, which is, is very good. Overall, we need to move six students from that partially. Overall, we need to move six students from that partially meeting to meeting. And if we continue and look at the high school biology, we can see that, well, first, I want to explain a little bit of a difference. This is 2018, 2019, 2021. The test is in flux. They're changing it, the MCAS test for biology. The 2018 is a legacy test. This is testing the standards that were pre-2016. The 2019 and 2021 are testing the standards that are common between the 2016, the pre-2016 and the new, the old standards and the new standards. And then, the test that we're going to have this June is going to be only assessing the new 2016 standards. So, there are some changes that are in place. Some of the big shifts are, we need to have the, the standards embed, the science and engineering practices into the disciplinary core ideas. When you traditionally think about standards, you think about the disciplinary core ideas. The new standards have those practices, the processes for doing science embedded in them. And the other big shift is around phenomena. And so, the idea is to use anchoring phenomena, so all the curriculum is aligned to, and anchoring phenomena of the students' experience. So, you can see that we are above the state average for high school biology by 1% for the advanced or proficient. And so, we're still holding strong here.
Okay. So, our initial analysis of these scores, some of our takeaways. These three, if you've gotten this, I think you've gotten this electronically, you can click on those links and you can, they're, they're very long lists of broken up by your subgroups. And we think it's really important to look at our subgroup data because, you know, sometimes when you look at just the average, you don't look at all the nuances, and that's really important for us to, to find out. So, one of the takeaways that we could see right away with the data was that our subgroup data revealed inequities in performance by race, by EL status, by disability status, by economic status, and by gender. One of the things that we noticed right away was that white students are meeting or exceeding expectations at higher rates than the state, but also that white students are outperforming their African-American and Latino-Latino classmates on Nantucket. Okay. So, these are our grades three through eight MCAS comparison of students meeting or exceeding expectations by subgroup. So, you can see the blue is the state average, and then the yellow is Nantucket's white student average, whereas the green is our African-American average and the orange is our Hispanic or Latino average. And this is, you can see the similarities in ELA, math, and in science. And then, this is in our high school MCAS comparison. This is high school. Yep. The first one was three to eight. And then, in high school, we see a similar pattern. Got it? Okay.
So, a little deeper dive, not too much, but a little bit of deeper dive onto this L-FEL phenomena, Ls meaning English learners, FELs meaning former English learners. If you look at Nantucket, which is highlighted in the green here, and you look at the percentages of not meeting for Ls, partially meeting is 53%, meeting is 9%. They're learning English. They're the kids that are scoring between one and four on ACCESS. They're the kids that are taking ACCESS. And if you look at that compared to the state and you look at the percentages, they're pretty much right on target. They're pretty much doing the same as any other English language learner in the state. So, they're, they're hitting their target while they're in and learning English as a second language or ESL while they're in their fifth content area. They're doing okay, according to their peers in the state. But when you look at former English learners and you look at Nantucket with 8% not meeting, 64% partially meeting, and only 26%, I believe, are meeting? And you compare that to what the state's former English language learners, we have some work to do. You can see that more of our students are partially meeting once they are reclassified and monitored. So, our main work that I see here is our sheltering, which Dr. Hall actually cited in her findings, and she was right on base with that. And hiring a SEI content coach is going to, I think, pay dividends as well as doing some other work with the staff around targeting the instruction that these students need specifically in order to catch up and, and get to those level fives and sixes after they've been reclassified. So, some more takeaways. Students with disabilities are meeting or exceeding expectations at only half the rate of their non-disabled peers. Girls are outperforming boys in ELA math and science in grades three through eight, but boys flip and are somehow outperforming the girls on the math in 10th grade. We need more investigation on that one. Interesting, right, Catherine? Some groups of students on Nantucket and some subjects are growing at a higher rate. So, there is some good news in here. So, look at this. Look at the 10, 10th grade ELA. Although they're not quite at the, at the state's level in terms of percentage meeting, they were higher in their SGP. And SGP is Student Growth Percentile. That means how much growth in a year. That means they outgrew the typical state. So, with that, your trajectory, we would, we would surpass them at some point if we could keep up this pace. Same is true for the MCAS ELA in three through eight. Not as high as the state, and that could be because, as I like to say, Nantucket is the best remote urban district I've ever been in. So, I think that the district does have a lot of demographics that tend to lean towards urban. And so, you're growing at a faster rate, but you still have those students that are learning English. So, you might not meet the state. And then, the math is about, we didn't like lose ground or make any ground on the SGP, so we're still below on the state in 10th grade math. And just a little bit, but not enough to really get any kind of leverage or trajectory to really meet the state for the three through eight math. So, those are the student growth data. That's the student growth data. Our next steps that we are talking about based on this data are...
So, one of the things that we, we do in our schools is we have what we call Data Days. And those are days where all the teachers and administrators get together and try to unpack some of the, the data that we're looking at and say, okay, now what? What do we do about this? And so, this is a protocol that we've used in the schools. Predict, go visual, observe, and infer, infer and question. And educators then will make action plans for either specific students, groups of students, classes. It may have to do with curriculum or our instruction or strategies that they're using. And they link these action plans to their educator goals. So, their, their, their own goals as professionals are linked to carrying out these improvement plans. And this really informed the district and our school improvement plans as well. And so, what are some of the other things that we're doing? Well, we're really trying to focus on equity, given that we have some inequities in our, our data. So, we have updated mission, vision, and core values that, that took our administrative team through. It really does focus on equity. We have contracted with Novak Consulting for some professional development from pre-K through 12 on equity by design, so really looking at curriculum instruction through an equity lens.
SEI coach, which I previously mentioned. And we've added math and literacy interventions at NIS and NII to help support our students. We're also doing a K-12 math review this year. We're working with Allison Mello, who is very well-respected in the state in terms of curriculum development in math. She's going to come out on October 28th, November 19th, November 18th, and November 19th and do some classroom observations. She's going to do focus groups with the teachers and administrators. And the goal is to really help us make a pathway that we can use, some guidelines. What do we need to do to make up some ground in math? We also have, in terms of phenomena-based science curriculum, this is an equity issue, making sure that we have that in place, because when everyone experiences the same phenomenon, then you can make sense of it. Right? If everyone's coming with different pieces of background information, then it's, it's harder to move everyone forward. So, we have adopted phenomena-based curriculum in K to five and also six to eight, which is starting the implementation stage this year. And it will take two or three years to completely roll out.
And the last thing that we're doing is a text inventory. And we're, what we're doing with that is we're really collecting information about the texts that students encounter across the 13 years that they're with us and the different grade levels and courses to better understand how these texts work together to build content knowledge and engage our students with diverse cultures and perspectives. So, we'll be doing some analysis of who are the authors, who are the main characters, what kind of cultures and backgrounds, and do they represent? And so, that is something that we're engaging on as well this year. So, any questions? It's a lot of data, I know.
I did have a question. I'm not sure if this is too unrelated, but I'm aware that the, I'm pretty sure the state government offers a scholarship for students that exceed in all three, right? Science, math, and English. I was wondering if they're still considering that this year, since obviously the score, scores are a lot lower, but...
We're going to defer to Mandy Bassel, and she is shaking her head yes.
It's the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and it's based on student scores for, I think it's just ELA and math right now this year. And it is based on their first time taking the exam. So, and that's what the scores are. So, a student who might have to retake the exam would not be considered. And it's also based on the percent number of students who have met that score at your school.
And I was also wondering about the demographics for Asians and like mixed race, because I noticed that it was only like Latino and African-American. So, I was wondering, is it because the student body at our school is too small to fully represent it?
That's exactly right. If it's, if it's too small, then it's, it's not statistically valid.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. So, thank you.
What's, what's considered stats too small? How many kids? What is that based on?
It's based on an alpha, usually in, in educational research, it's .5. And it, it depends on the sample size. So, I don't know if we can like give you that information right now, but we can look up what statistical significance would be. But our numbers for the Asian community was low, were, were low.
Well, as we're all in our diversity committee, I'd like to know what the breakdown is. No, no numbers too low. I'd like to know.
If I may, we don't get any of that information because the number is too low. So, the state will not provide us with the information because we have a very small number of students. So, we, unless we look at very individual student scores, which we could eventually do, we wouldn't be able to provide that information because the state doesn't release it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Merle?
No questions.
Laura?
I do have one question, if I may, through the chair. I'm curious about the underperforming students. Do you think that it could be that there is, there is a transient population that they are not with us throughout? I wonder, I would just be curious if that has a great deal of impact.
It would be interesting to go in and look at the demographics data, which would also include their time in Nantucket public schools. That would require a level of data analysis that the state does not provide us. And someone with expertise to do higher linear modeling.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not suggesting that, that you all take that on. I'm just curious about it.
It's a very good, interesting question. When you start to dig into this, like it raises a whole bunch of other questions that we also have as well, you know? There are a lot of different directions that we can go and, and learn. And as Jennifer said, the state keeps releasing more reports, and so, as we keep digging, we're finding more information. But we are open to questions.
Thank you. It's very complete.
All right.
Yeah. It's, it's a lot of information. My head is, is sort of swimming and, and just reading and hearing you present, it's, I, I know you don't know this, but I'm, I am wondering, particularly for our EL population, how many students, particularly those who are going through the access, is their literacy, the books that they're taking home, is it in their native language or is it in English? And are our younger children being in a situation where they've got two languages? Is there already developmentally building their language and their vocabulary, but now they're, they're doubling up because they're not only learning their own language, right? The Spanish, let's say, and then they're learning English. That's a lot for a little person to be taking on and confusing. So, I'm wondering, do you, do you have an idea of how many students are going home and speaking English at home or, or having their day at school, speaking English, and then at home, their native language? And then, what are their choices of literacy out of school?
So, we have approximately 42% of our population right now that are multi, they're, they have another language at home. So, that's 40, that's 707 students. We only instruct in English right now. There's no literacy programs that instruct for, say, Portuguese or Spanish. There are programs that exist like that, which would be a two-way bilingual program, which we could go through the process of applying so that both languages are taught right from the little ones in K all the way up, and they truly are a biliterate student by the time they, they reach eighth grade, they're ready, they could pass any AP tests that they needed to in either language. So, that we do not have that right now. That just came back into being allowed when they passed the, the new Look Act a few years ago, which also has the seal of biliteracy. So, our goal, my goal, is to work on getting as many students multilingual in this district as possible. But right now, they're, they're doing it through their own networks. Russian school, Spanish school, Saturday school. There's not as much as I would like to see in our schools.
If that is multilingual becoming biliterate, the research is showing that there are very positive correlations to learning both languages. Thank you.
And literacy in the first language assists with literacy in the second language. So, what, what we're seeing is a lot of students that attend the region high school, they may be bilingual, but not biliterate. And we see that as problematic.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've got such a rich opportunity. Yeah. Yeah. It would be great if we could continue on the bilingual. With the equity piece too, it, you know, that's disturbing to look at the stats. And I'm wondering, if you don't have a plan now, if you could come back or send us a report on what are the actual sort of steps that we are taking in our classrooms to sort of bring in the, the equity piece so that we're not, I mean, it, we see this, we talk about this a lot at the school committee, and, and it's like, I'd love to know, what can we do? What are the tangible things that we can do that we can help our students move forward and, and gain?
If I, if I may, one of the things that I feel is that the MCAS needs to be more equitable itself in, in, as, as an assessment. And my hope is that as the MCAS changes over time, that that comes into play because it is very challenging for our English learners to have contextual knowledge of some of the questions that they may see in an ELA exam. And, and it's, that's really hard. So, I think that's part of it, is the exam itself is not equitable.
It's really, it's like the phenomena-based science, right? It's really just like the phenomena-based science, right? If you're providing experiences that they all have, and then they can make sense of it and show what they know when they're making sense of it. And that's what we need to be testing as opposed to their background knowledge that is leading into the questions.
It's set up to be unfair.
I have a question. Why was our grades three and eight lumped together? Because that seems to be a very different populations at either end of that.
So we could have done every single grade, three to eight, or we could do three to eight.
Yeah, but every single grade, I mean, in grade three, you are having kids that are really beginning, in the EL population, learning English. Whereas by grade eight, I would hope that they have become proficient. And I mean, I think that's a better thing than lumping them.
In this district, your English language learners are right on target. They exit the program most likely in four years. There's only eighteen students in the entire district that have been in the instruction of ESL for more than four years. So your Ls are right on target with the state. The concern is, once they're exited and in the class without that fifth instruction area, that's when they're not getting what they need, which is why the science and the math and the phenomena base is so important so that we can take them from that four on that access when they actually are reclassified. The focus needs to be on those kids that are fours that are no longer Ls that need to go up to the five and the six on the access.
And of course, we're looking at every grade separately, but just for purposes of time for this presentation, we did lump them together.
Also, if I may add, newcomers come at any time. You could have a seventeen-year-old come in and does not speak any English. So we have to work with that student, make sure that we support them as best we can to move them towards MCAS for graduation. So it is a challenge, but we deal with that all across.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a lot to do just yet.
You have such information.
Thank you.
Okay, Martin.
Good evening. This is first quarter presentation coming less than a month, I guess, or a month after the fourth quarter of the previous year. So within three, four weeks in school, it's, as you see by the numbers, operating expenses, which is, which combines payroll and all the expenses for the school are one point three four four ahead of last year. Most of that is the payroll increase, which is a little over nine hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. Those are contractual obligations as well as timing of payrolls. Usually a payroll for the school district, a bi-weekly payroll falls around eight hundred and forty to eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So timing of payrolls and where they fall and what date plays into these increases, as well as obviously, like I said, contractual increases. Twenty-four percent of the budget are expanded at this point versus twenty-one last year, and then thirteen percent of payroll versus ten. And so these are normal numbers for us. It's the first quarter, almost a quarter of the budget is expanded. If you look at the chart, the densely populated with numbers chart on the screen, you see that if you compare twenty-two with twenty-one, in certain categories, there is discrepancies. But if you compare it with twenty, it falls more in line, specifically professional services and repair and maintenance utilities. All these categories are more in line with twenty-twenty and payroll as well. Professional services, we have seen increase this year. If you look at the tuition expense, it shows a drop from last year of two hundred and forty thousand dollars, give or take. That's because this year, we have partnered with an organization to bring in out-of-district students in district. So the special education director, Deb Gately, has worked with effective school solutions is the provider, and we have a contract signed. So that's why we transferred money out of the tuition expense, which is paying other schools for out-of-district students to a professional services account for consultants within the special education budget. That's the reason you see the decrease in the tuition line, and then you see a corresponding increase into the professional services category. So others, other examples are, for instance, athletics travel. Last year, we had zero encumbrances or actual expenses because obviously we were remote, no events were happening in September. This year, obviously, we have gone as close to normal as the circumstances allow. So we have close to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in expenses and encumbrances, which mean future obligations. We usually do those on anticipation of how much we expend over the year. So a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is not the number we've expended in September. It's the number we expect to expend for the year for travel, athletic travel. As an aside, obviously, that number is supplemented by the athletics revolver. So that's the public schools. The community school this year is on a road of recovery, if you can call it that. It's, the revenue growth is eighty-four thousand dollars according to the charts and the statements that you've received. But the actual program revenue, which is a much more important metric, is a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar growth. That is because we have a reduction of fifty thousand dollars in the general fund subsidy. That is the money that come from town to subsidize the operations of the community school. Expenses have increased as well, which is normal as operations have resumed, obviously. And the big one is a purchase of a new driver's ed vehicle, which is now on campus. We, you may know that the last vehicle was purchased in two thousand seventeen. It's out of warranty. These vehicles take beating. So they are now due for service more often than when they're newer. So a new vehicle was needed. And also, we have great demand for driving lessons. So this is a welcome addition. I would like to use this opportunity to thank the Nantucket Education Trust, which contributed twelve thousand five hundred dollars towards the purchase of that vehicle. So the other part of the increase in the expenditures for the community school is mostly purchase of supplies, equipment. As programming has resumed, obviously, normal operations compared to last year. Last year was a lot different at that time of the year especially. For the school lunch program, the school lunch program right now shows a deficit of over forty-eight thousand dollars as opposed to around thirty-one last year. We do anticipate this year is gonna, I think it's gonna, the deficit there is gonna be much smaller than last year. And if you remember, I reported that last year it was close to two hundred seventy thousand dollars. I think we'll stay within the budgeted subsidy of ninety-three thousand dollars. I may be overly optimistic, but I think this year we have higher participation because we are in person. So obviously, kids are in school and they're getting lunches, and we are being reimbursed at a much higher rate per lunch and breakfast than we were last year. This year, the reimbursement for lunch is, I think, four thirty-two, and breakfast is two forty-six. Last year, we were being reimbursed at three sixty-four and one eighty-six for breakfast. So increased participation, more volume will create higher reimbursements as we see them coming. Obviously, the September one was just sent, so we're gonna see these reimbursements coming in the future months. And I think the deficit there would, I expect personally, that it will be less than it was last year. If you have any questions? Have a good time, sir.
Ms. Marilyn?
No questions.
Laura?
No questions. Thank you.
Catherine?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the public school mentoring program.
Seeing a lot of them tonight. Okay, so our mentors are experienced teachers who are paired with new teachers new to the teaching profession as well as new to the Nantucket schools. And the goals of the mentoring program is to link those teachers for assistance and guidance. During this mentoring period, there will be ongoing collaboration, and we'll really try to encourage the growth of the new teacher. And for experienced teachers who are new to the district, it offers at least a one-year partnership designed to provide support with what's new to Nantucket Public Schools and the town of Nantucket. We have a mentoring induction steering committee. The steering committee is charged with developing a mentoring program. If there is not one there, since we have a mentoring program that has been going on for a number of years, their charge is to evaluate and refine it, to determine what resources we need and to conduct an annual review and evaluation. And we, these are, thank you. So these are the members that we have. We try to be somewhat representative. It's all volunteer commitments to be on the steering committee. And we just met a few weeks ago for the first time. And we'll meet again probably at the end of the year to collect some, after we've collected some data about the mentoring program this year. So how are the policies program operating funded? Our total budget last year was forty-two thousand three hundred. The vast majority of that comes from our Title IV Part A federal grant, and then the rest comes from the curriculum budget. All but three hundred dollars goes to pay mentors, stipends to the mentors for their time. They're expected to put in at least forty hours with the new teachers over the course of the year, and generally, they put in way more than that. So who were the mentees? Who are our new teachers? I did a comparison here of last year and this year, and it's remarkably similar in terms of the numbers. We have more, but they are kind of representative from all four schools. And the number of years of experience that the teachers have are fairly similar as well. This was our schedule for new teacher training last year. It's pretty bare bones. Everything was virtual. And a lot of the things that normally happen that require, you know, looking at student work together, putting heads together, obviously, that didn't happen last year. So it was a pretty bare bones support for new teachers, and that really did influence how we developed the program this year, which I'll talk to you a little bit about. So here's, we always do a survey at the end of the year of the mentors and the mentees. A lot of data come in, came in. I'm just sharing a few different pieces of information. So during a typical week, how many hours did you have contact with your mentee? In what ways did you interact? What was interesting is this was based on last year, and I was kind of expecting to see more virtual meeting or phone calls. And you can see one of the highest responses was individual face-to-face meetings. You just can't beat that for supporting and getting support. So that's, that happened last year. I expect to see even more of that this year. Which of the following topics did you discuss with your mentee? So these were, some of these were things that we expected. Some of them were, you know, wow, it's amazing how much time was spent on that or how many people addressed to that. So the district evaluation process obviously takes a lot of time because every district, even if you're not a brand-new teacher, every district has their own process and expectation. So obviously, they're gonna be working on that. Working with parents and families also took a lot of time that mentors and mentees spent that time to really work through, especially last year given COVID. How many observations did you do of your mentor's classroom practice? And how many observations did your mentor do of your classroom in practice or practice? And you can see thirty-three percent of the mentees observed their mentor, and forty-seven percent of mentees had their mentor observe them. That is not as high as we would like to see. This, it was difficult last year because of COVID. There's limits to how many people could be in the room. We had a difficult time finding coverage, even when someone was out sick, subcoverage. So we really wanted to increase that number this year. Here are some mentee survey results. The mentor program has helped me develop my confidence as a teacher and my effectiveness in the classroom. And most of our mentees strongly agreed with this. They were able to give them assistance with curriculum and instruction. So they did feel they were supported, which was important to us. I'm not gonna go through these, but there's some just really great feedback that hopefully you'll have time to read about whether they, our mentees and mentors believe that this caring was a good match. All of our mentors said yes. Twenty of twenty-one of our mentees said yes. They thought it was a good match, and they provided some really good feedback. What additions and changes for the mentor program would you suggest for future years? And we looked at this very closely, and we did make some changes based on those. So here are some of the main changes that we made. We had professional mentor training. We really worked with the mentors, these experienced teachers, to really focus on what does it mean to observe a new teacher and give them feedback and to coach them. Because we really wanted to focus on that process of peer observation. And there's so much learning that goes on by watching another teacher and, you know, perform their craft. There's so much learning that happens there. So we really wanted, and for the mentor, to give some feedback to the new teacher. So we really focused on that for professional mentor training. We contracted with Research for Better Teaching, which a lot of people know from the Skillful Teacher course that a lot of teachers have taken. We also have extended professional development, really something that we did not do last year, but we again contracted with Research for Better Teaching. And once a month, we are meeting with brand-new teachers with professional development with RBT. And then for our teachers who are not new to teaching but new to Nantucket, we're meeting with them every other month. So we've got some differentiation for brand-new teachers versus teachers who are not new to teaching but new to Nantucket. We've also invited all our year two and year three teachers to participate in this professional development, particularly our year two teachers, because they didn't get much last year. And so, and we've also opened it, we've asked all principals and other evaluators, if you have an educator who you feel would really benefit based on what we're offering, please feel free to refer them and have them attend. We've opened that up to anybody who wants to come. And we've had some teachers who have chosen on their involition to attend some of those PD sessions. We've also increased our expectation of mutual observation and feedback and have really emphasized, we will provide you release time. We have a lot more flexibility, not a ton more, but we have some more flexibility this time with coverage. And Beth and the other directors and the principals have said, just let me know. We can follow a lesson plan while you observe each other. We think that's really, really important. And we do have the expectation that they will observe each other at least once a month, at least for the first half of the school year. And this is two pages worth of our mentoring induction schedule this year. You can see we have topics like relationships and routines and climate and expectations. We've always had sessions on our English learners and special education, but lesson planning and clarity and principles of learning and cooperative learning. These are all two-hour sessions that our new teachers and the mentors are attending together and working through problems of practice. And then they go back to their classrooms, and when they observe each other, they're asked to observe specifically for whatever the topic was in that PD. So, you know, if it's lesson planning, they're gonna be looking for, what is the lesson planning that's going on in your class when I observe you? Questions?
Catherine?
I don't have any questions.
Marky?
No, sir.
Ms. Marilyn?
No questions.
I don't have any questions, but I would just like to say that I think it's a wonderful program to have that mentoring in place. And I think there's great value in, as you say, observing another teacher and being observed. So, thank you. It looks wonderful.
Paula?
Yes, I think it is valuable. I got to chat with you just very quickly today at lunch. You know, it makes me think about what else can we do for our teachers new to the district around committing them to the island and things to do and how to connect, certainly to do things outside of school. And I said to Jennifer, this is, I'm not suggesting this is another thing to add to your role, but, you know, I think as a school committee, it's important for us to have this conversation because it's difficult to come moving to an island. And so I think it would be good for us to have some conversation or some plan on how we could help bring new teachers into feeling welcome and giving them an idea of what the island has to offer. island has to offer. One question for you, though, Jennifer, is how do you, how do you determine the mentors and mentees? How do you choose who you match with whom?
So that's mostly principals and assistant principals who make recommendations. They all have to have some training as a mentor in order to be eligible. They have to be with the district and have professional teacher status, so they have to have been here for at least three years. And they have to have at least a proficient on their educator evaluation. We try to match, when we can, similar grade level or similar, at least in the same school, on a secondary-level subject matter, you know, matters a lot more. So we try to, to sometimes have, you know, an English teacher mentor an English, a new English teacher and that sort of thing. It's not always possible. And with as many new teachers as we have this year, you know, it, we were stumbling a little bit. And, and it was, it's a big job. I mean, teachers who take this on just don't do it for money. They do it because they feel like they want to give back to, to other members of the profession. And after last year, we had a lot of people who said, I'm stepping back from taking a lot of other responsibilities because they were really burned out after last year. It was incredibly difficult year. So I'm so grateful for those who have stepped up. And we have a few mentors who actually have taken on two mentees this year, which is amazing.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just wonder if there is an adjustment program outside of the school to the island, as Pauline was sort of alluding to. Maybe taking them all scalloping, I don't know. But I think that it gives people an opportunity to get a little different view of the island than specifically within these walls. I don't know how, quite how you do it, but I think maybe, I don't know, introduction to island culture. They don't have to read Moby Dick, but, I mean, there are just a lot of things that I think that people will figure out, but it sometimes can make it easier. But I think the mentoring is very, very important. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Committee discussion and votes to be taken. A vote for approval to authorize independent food trucks to be allowed on the Nantucket Public School campus. And this, this is not the six hundred dollars and the rest of that. You're going to come up with a more specific proposal, but this is just to allow them on the campus, correct?
I didn't know you would vote on this tonight. Dr. Hallett, maybe you can speak to this?
It's, the idea is whether or not we can, we can, again, hone the draft and make sure that it, it will, it will give us time, if we vote tonight, to be able to do that. If we do vote on, on the 26th, which is our retreat, then we don't have that time to share with food trucks that we will allow them on. So it's, it's really up to the committee as to whether you want to keep this motion or remove it.
I'd love to see a vote.
Oh, yes.
Logan.
I mean, you cannot vote at a workshop.
Ah, thank you.
Can't vote at a workshop.
No, but I think this is an important topic, but it's, it's got to be fleshed out because I think the fees and et cetera are one question, but really, the question is whether to allow the trucks on the campus.
Right.
And I think that, to me, is really the crux of the issue. We're not voting on the specifics of what was presented here tonight, but on the concept of allowing the trucks on them, then that can be fleshed out and brought then, brought before the committee.
Can I ask a quick question? So if you vote that they're allowed on the campus, but then you can't vote at a workshop, so we could never do this at homecoming, is that what you're saying?
If we don't vote tonight, it'll be too late. Pretty much, right?
Well, voting approval to have allowed the trucks on the campus. And then be between Dr. Hallett and you at a workshop.
Right. So if I may, then it would, it would be our, your, and my responsibility to change that application to reflect. We'll have to probably do more research. We, we did look at what our fees were currently for field rentals, room rentals, auditorium rentals. So the six hundred dollars made sense. The foot, the field rentals are six hundred dollars for the day. So we thought with any sort of parking space area for a food truck to be, that six hundred made sense because that was similar to what we were seeing in, in a day long.
But have we asked the food truck people? Because I think Rocky brought up a point. I mean, I think that that's sort of a smoky issue, and I'm not sure just doing the field rental, to me, is the way to go. But I think the idea is something that we ought to vote on.
If you wish to vote, you might consider making a specific motion with specific language about what it is you want to vote. And if you want to put any part of the process to a later time, you can consider that the language should be specific.
Well, the language I was proposing was that this would allow food trucks to be on our campus. The particulars would come at a later date.
Only if, however, if we were, if we are talking about homecoming and allowing food trucks to be there for homecoming, you, the school committee would, would provide us with the le, the leverage to be able to make a decision around the fees.
Fees.
Okay. And we can certainly share that with you. We can certainly share what we've discovered and, and provide that, that number. So that wouldn't, that would not be part of your vote. Your vote, your vote is to allow food trucks and leave it up to us to make that decision around.
Do you think that's specific there, somewhat other than the superintendent?
Well, I would make a motion that we allow the food trucks on the NPS campus and that decisions regarding the fees and scheduling be left to the, to Diane and to Dr. Hallett. Or their specific roles, not necessarily named. Does anybody want a second there?
Yep. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I just ask a question? I didn't want to confuse it with the vote, but, you know, we were talking, it's in here that the food truck staff are to be corried. And I don't know that it's clear that we've asked that of the boosters club in the past. So I would just put, I think that that's fair because it-
I asked that question.
Yeah. And I don't think they are corried, right? Correct at this point?
I'm not sure if they are or not, but-
If I may, some, some of our boosters, at least that I've seen recently, are employees of the school, so we would obviously only have to corry people who are not. And certainly, we can, we can do that.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
It's a short process for corrying to get through, so.
Okay. Vote to approve the policies, JB, JFABD, JFABE, JFABF, JFBB, JH, and JIC, as we discussed at our last meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation to Cyrus Pierce Middle School for the link sale from the Egan Maritime Institute, the amount of five hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Are you-
I'm recusing.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting minutes of October 5th.
If I may-
Sure.
There is a mistake on the date.
Let me find that.
It says September 21st.
I will be happy to change that.
Thank you.
Can I, sorry. We have all received a new agenda that was printed that should reflect the twenty-five thousand dollars for the Oceanography Maritime Program as a donation to CPS. It's double digits.
Where is that?
It was emailed.
It came in through, yeah.
I wish I could use a brief email that was sent to us.
You have it there?
No, it's, it, I have it on my email. It's for twenty-five thousand from Egan Maritime for the oceanography teacher's position, the gift. And there, there was a copy of the check as well that came through. And I'm recusing from that one as well. I make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Transfers, transfers, and invoices. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we actually voted on the minutes because then we got distracted with the other-
Well, yes, we did, September 21st.
We did actually say aye. I don't think we did.
September 21st.
Okay. I didn't. Aye.
You were too busy recusing.
I was too busy.
People want to know.
Subcommittee work.
Yeah, woman.
I attended the Cape Cod Collaborative in person, which was, yeah, it was great. It was, it was partially virtual and partially in person. Lots of conversation. One of the notes that I think I would like to bring up was they also have a transportation issue and that our bus drivers are paid ten dollars more than they are on the mainland, which I thought was very significant and interesting. So I look forward to another meeting. And they also talked about the Cape Cod Collaborative Professional Development and hoping that there will be lots of participation from our end. And that's it?
Thank you.
Diversity committee, did you guys meet?
No, we do have to.
Okay.
Just waiting.
Student council, Catherine.
So last Thursday was the club fair, which I found kind of exciting because it was a new opportunity to let students join clubs because of COVID last year. It was just hard for students to actually, like, fully engage with clubs. So I think it was prevalent that we had it for the freshman class, too, since now they're high schoolers and they probably want to get involved with clubs. And the pep rally is scheduled for Friday, October 29th. It's to help induce school spirit for a homecoming weekend. So I'm excited for that, too, for fall athletes. And the homecoming dance is actually this Saturday. It's at the VFW. And homecoming king and queen are going to be nominated, so that's good. And the first quarter is going to end soon, is ending on November 15th. So the second quarter is going to start that day for students. And Powder Puff, actually, the date was moved from Tuesday the 27th? No, previously, Tuesday the 26th to Wednesday the 27th. So, date for that changed. And I was wondering if I should speak upon the vandalism and hate speech that recently kind of arose after Sarah Swenson's article on Veritas. I didn't know if you guys knew about the situation, or if you want me to explain it, I can because I have a whole paper here.
Why don't you present it, Catherine?
Yeah. So basically, within the latest Veritas article, Sarah Swenson wrote an article about the homophobic and racist slurs that were found in both the boys' and girls' bathroom. And the fear that induces students to not speak up about them because of various reasons. One is a popular belief that when students report to the faculty, that the faculty doesn't respond. And I asked Mrs. Vassal, I had a conversation with her about this, and we talked about how it was kind of concerning that students feel this way because I'm not really sure who these students are talking to, like, which teachers they're talking to that aren't responding to the concerns that they see and hear in the hallways. Because, I don't know, it's just very weird. And other issues why they claim that they don't choose to speak up is because they believe that if they were to report the vandalism or what they hear, it will induce more anger into the, the people who claim the stuff and just causes more backlash. Or they fear that the perpetrator is gonna just have greater high-end persecution towards them as the individual, so they don't want to report it. But my overall opinion on this is that the students should be heard on this issue because it's very concerning and that they should feel like they don't need the fear to speak up about it because I'm not sure who they're talking to, but that's just my one concern is just who they're talking to and who's not taking responsibility over what they've heard about this. Because in Sarah Swenson's article, there was a lot of students who claimed that they've talked to the faculty for, like, years and have never received any good, like, a solid response or help on the situation, so. I was just-
You know, I read that article, and it took a lot of will for Mr. Graves to step up. But what I, only about that article, what I read, there were six anonymous sources.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
And you know what? It's very easy to be anonymous. And I don't think, I've only been on this committee for six months, but I've been in the school system forever, and I have just plenty of teachers in this room. If you were to go to them, it takes a lot of courage to step up. Let's be honest about that. I don't know any administrator or teacher in this room who would not take that to their heart. When that article was written, you cannot use one quote from Mr. Graves, who had the stones to step up, and six anonymous students. It doesn't become valid. You know what I mean? And not a teacher in this room would not go to bat for you kids.
Yeah.
And like you said, who are they talking to?
Yeah, like, I talked to Mrs. Vassal, and she said that if she's not aware of the situation, she can't do anything about it, so.
If it's broke, you can fix it. You gotta tell us. That's why they went anonymous. Sorry.
Beth, do you have anything to say about that?
No, just that I know that Mrs. Vassal and Ms. Saradellis are absolutely committed to making sure that there is no retaliation whatsoever, and, and they really do need students to be able to, to, to share information. Otherwise, it, it will not get, it will not get taken care of. We have to hear. And we have to know that, that, or students have to know that they can be, that, that our administration can be trusted and teachers can be trusted to do the right thing by bringing forward any issues. Bobby?
Yeah. I just think more students need to be coming forward to the administration.
No, I, no, I certainly think that if students are having problems, seeing something going on, seeing vandalism or undergoing bullying, which is really what we're talking about, I mean, that's a big, big issue. And they, if they are not getting a response from a teacher, then they should go up to, go up one level, go up to the principal. Or call the superintendent. Because I think these are issues that have to be dealt with and effectively, efficiently, and quickly. And it, students should not be afraid of retaliation because if they come forward, that will be handled.
Yeah, it's like, it's like the belief that the student body has that the faculty will not respond, that they won't go out to do it because they believe they're not going to do anything about it. But I find that very surprising because I know a lot of teachers who would definitely take responsibility to help the kids out and get parents involved in, because this is such a serious issue, so. Not really sure what's happening with that, but I hope we can get some answers from the students who did talk to Sarah, if there's any way, but to elaborate on their views, but.
Can't reveal a source.
I don't think she's going to reveal who the anonymous people were, but maybe Jordan Graves, because he revealed his name, so he seems to be willing to step up about it, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing it up, Catherine.
Any other business?
No, I had, I had written it down to talk about the graffiti, so.
One other thing, didn't we, didn't we go to the rest of the Jays?
That would be in the policy subcommittee. If, if it wasn't reported on, you're welcome to do that.
Didn't we finish the Jays?
We did, we did.
The Jays were like this big.
We did.
That's why you run that committee.
Thanks for that, Coach.
Before the first pitch, can I have a motion- Before the first pitch, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move. Do you want to do the Horizon?
Okay, Horizon.
Too late? It's already adjourned?
No, we didn't, we didn't vote.
We didn't vote.
The Horizon, I wanted to share the Horizon because we haven't gotten to that. Very simply, we have, we have a retreat on the 26th of October. It's going to be at the, at 56th Center Street.
Okay.
So we will see you there.
When?
On October 26th. You'll see it right here. And then November 9th, we have a CBTE presentation. So we'll have our career and technical vocational teachers coming to, to share ELL update and preliminary budget, budget forecast and the Nantucket Boys and Girls Club. So that will be our next thing. The Jay policies will actually be brought amended to you on November 16th.
Okay, great.
And they'll be voted on at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Now a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have, um, I would just like to confirm the time.
Six to- Where the music-
The community school is?
Six to nine, okay. Yeah, the community school and the music school in there. Okay.
And you know where, you know where?
I do.
You know where 56th Center, it's where the music school-
It's nice to have, it's nice to have- We've been rehearsing there almost exclusively, which I love.
Yeah, I know where it is now. It's right across from the J C House.
Yes.
Thank you, Bobby. I know. I love hearing the stories of you, Skala.
Sunset Street is around the corner.
I hope in a nice way.
Thank you.
You know what?
That's good to hear.
Diversity Committee?
Oh, all right. I couldn't stay up for the whole game last night. It was 9:30 when I went to bed. 9:30, what a beautiful score.